Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, the fourteenth of March, and the time is 7:03. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Steven.
Present.
Commissioner Sims.
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Vice Chair Korsak.
Present.
Chair Barnes.
Here. At this time, could Commissioner Sims lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A flag for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you, Jeff. Next item is approval of the agenda. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda submitted.
Motion from Commissioner Baker.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harris. Voice? Commissioner Dejeanay?
Uh-oh, is my turn?
Not yet.
My turn.
You got the bad terminal tonight, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
It says it's okay, but it's not registering there.
His vote's not registering. Want to do a roll call?
Yes.
Or a voice vote?
Yes.
All in.
Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Steven.
Yes.
Commissioner Sims.
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Korsak. Chair Barnes.
Yes. Agenda is approved, seven to zero. Next, moving on to the consent calendar. There is one item, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February the twenty-eighth. Motion to approve?
I motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Korsak.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Dejeanay. No bueno. Try it again, electronic vote. So whoever's last loses, huh? It's moved down there. Ah, there it goes, it registered, sorry. My apologies, so motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Assuming that's Commissioner Baker, because he was not here, correct. Yep. All right. Next on the agenda, the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, please fill out a request to speak form that are available back there on the table by the door. And remember that you have, time is limited to three minutes. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
No? Wow. Very good, moving on. Non-public hearing items, we have none. First public hearing item of the night, case one, is PEN one-eight dash zero-two-zero-eight. The applicant is Shannon Santa Anna LLC. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, the staff report will be presented by Associate Planner Julia Descoto.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission, I'm Julia Descoto, and before you this evening is a conditional use permit for a retail cannabis facility located at, wrong, let me check with media, we have the wrong slides up. The cannabis facility is located at two-three-zero-three-one Sunnymead Boulevard, in the specific plan two-zero-four, which is a community commercial zone. The site to, the surrounding area is to the northeast and west is also within the specific plan, community commercial. And then to the further south of the project, the parcel directly behind it is still community commercial, but behind that is residential five with existing single-family dwellings. In two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, the city of Moreno Valley adopted ordinances setting regulations for cannabis facilities. Following that, Title Nine, Section nine point oh-nine point two-nine oh and nine oh-nine point two-nine three was added to the city's municipal code for the land use part of the cannabis operations. The applicant tonight received their provisional license in August of two thousand eighteen, and then subsequently submitted their conditional use permit application in October of two thousand eighteen. As I mentioned, the site is located at two-three-zero-three-one Sunnymead Boulevard, and it's an approximate fourteen hundred square foot facility. The conditional use permit as we presented you tonight is in conformance with the standards in Title Nine. The location of the building is in, let me get to it. Is approximately three thousand six hundred square feet. Currently, there are two other retail operations in that facility, or in that building. Picture of it. The site will access from Sunnymead Boulevard in a right-in, right-out, and there is also reciprocal access through the rear to Frederick, which is also a right-in, right-out. There are three suites, as I mentioned, in there, and there is parking in front of the building with access from Sunnymead. Currently, there's no expansion of the building requested with this application, it's in the existing suite, and there's no additional building allowed. Have the applicant do a parking study on this site, because there is limited parking. The site is existing, legal non-conforming, which means that at the time that the building was built, either it met the code at that time, which is likely, or they approved it without meeting a bet for our purposes, it is legal non-conforming. We did follow the municipal code for retail parking at two-twenty-five, which if we did that, they would require sixteen spaces, and they currently have twelve. But again, it's existing, and there's no opportunity at this site for us to add additional The project is a retail use, and it is in an existing space of an existing center. As designed and conditioned, the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section one-five-three-zero-one for existing facilities. The public hearing notice was posted on the site, mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet, and published in the newspaper per the city requirements. To date for this project, I have not had any calls or questions about the project. We would ask that Condition thirty-eight be removed. Condition thirty-eight talks about being over twenty-one, but it also refers to delivery, and the code, the Title Nine does not allow any delivery, and that condition came from Title Five. And Condition thirty-seven states that this application must comply with Title Five, so we'll remove that to avoid the confusion. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve, and thereby certify that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approved PEN eighteen dash zero-two-zero-eight, a conditional use permit, subject to the conditions of approval as amended. And at this time, staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Julia. Any questions from the commission?
A quick question, on page nine, under city regulations.
I'm sorry, page?
Page nine.
Nine?
Under city regulations, it says in November two thousand seventeen, the City Council adopted ordinance nine-twenty-six. What I was reading on the page, is that that nine-twenty-six was replaced by nine-twenty-four? Should that reflect, I mean, by nine-forty-four? I think nine-twenty-six and nine-thirty-three got replaced by, nine-twenty-six and nine-thirty-three got replaced by ordinance nine-forty-four.
There were revisions done, I don't know that the whole section got replaced, but I can certainly check on that.
What was in the two thousand seventeen, what did we approve back then as far as total permits?
In two thousand seventeen, I don't believe they specified the permit numbers. Putting it in the land use, but Chris may.
If I may, there was a, an initial ordinance for Title Nine that did identify a certain number of permits, and that certain number of permits was a total of twenty-seven. The different categories included cultivation, manufacturing, testing, dispensaries, distribution, and micro-business. The mix of those numbers, I can get those for you.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that, so the total number was like twenty, it was in the twenties, and now where are we at? Forty-three? Is that, that was what it was revised to in December?
That's the, that's the potential.
So what precipitated that movement?
That's the potential, based on the market interest and market demands that we had experienced during the initial, what we call a planet bids solicitation for interested businesses. And then that was vetted through the City Council.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, I just wanted, on conditions of approval, number fifteen and number twenty-seven, I just noticed that it says, no cannabis or marijuana raw materials, and then it, twenty-seven, that's number fifteen, number twenty-seven, it also says, all marijuana and cannabis products. Isn't that redundant? Shouldn't it just be cannabis?
There are other products along with marijuana that have cannabis in them.
Right, but there, you know, the proper term for what some people would call marijuana is cannabis.
Correct.
So why would you need to put both words in? Unless you put cannabis, and then in parentheses, put marijuana for people that don't know what cannabis is.
It's actually, as it's written in the code, is the way we're putting it in the conditions, there are some subtle differences, I understand what you're saying, but cannabis does include other products, and so I think the idea is that they included both items in some of these conditions of approval, or I should say, in the ordinance, which is now brought into the conditions.
Although they're not, there's not two different products, it's all one, it's all the same.
It's all the same, but marijuana is, my understanding, made from cannabis, but there could be other cannabis products that are not necessarily marijuana, so it's subtle, in terms of kind of definitions and such, but in terms of the...
Possibly, we could have the owner, or, I'm sorry, the, I believe his name is Chris Farley, when he comes up, he can probably answer those questions, because I do believe that they're, the terms are interchangeable, and the actual proper name is cannabis, and it's just like, you know, they're kind of slang, marijuana is kind of a slang term, like weed, pot, marijuana. I just, that's just my opinion. It might be right, we can ask him when he comes up.
Sure, we can ask him, and then we can also research that and look at that for any future code updates.
Commissioner Steven?
Okay, I have a question. Recently, we went to an academy, and I, there was a presentation that had to do with the cannabis, and even though it wasn't quite in-depth, there are a lot of bills that will be coming down, and I was wondering if staff had allowed for any of those in the conditions of approval, that if any of those bills become law, that the applicants will have to conform to those laws?
Conditions?
Because I understand there were like sixty. That's a lot.
We have, we have Title Nine, which has certain conditions of approval, and then we also are watching the state to see how they're changing the code as they change, and as we see how they affect how our code is written, then we would look at modifying them.
Okay.
If it's a strict, all these applicants have to go through a state process as well, once they complete the city Moreno Valley's process, so...
Right, I understand that, but I'm just wondering if there was anything on the conditions stating that if the law changed, then they would have to conform to that. I don't know if they'd have to put it in writing, or it's just something that is a given.
If I may, we do have Condition number four, which states that they must be consistent with all applicable, you know, state and local requirements.
No, I was just wondering if, I know, it seems like it says that they have to conform as it exists now, but how about in the future? That's what I was wondering.
Conditions of approval are ongoing, so if the state makes a change to its operating requirements, they're going to have to comply with those going forward as well.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
Anybody else?
Yes, one more, another question. On Conditions of Approval, number eighteen, no Persian cell smoker, ingest, or otherwise consume cannabis in any form on or within twenty feet of the dispensary site. Is that something that the applicant monitors or controls, or that is a city?
Applicant will have onsite security, that will make sure that there's no loitering around their establishment, and make sure that doesn't happen, yes.
Thank you.
That actually leads me to my question on number twenty-nine. Licensee shall prohibit loitering by individuals outside the licensed premises or anywhere on the property. There's a pizza parlor and a smoke shop right next door, yet he's responsible for the entire property? How do we, how do we enforce that? Seems problematic.
Yeah, from enforcement's perspective, there's a couple different things at play there. The conditions require the property owner to do everything that's practicable to maintain those conditions, so, you know...
Property owner, or?
Or the, I'm sorry, the applicant here, the business owner. So in this case, posting signs, asking people to leave, you know, doing reasonable steps of enforcement there. At the end of the day, the punishment or the, for not complying with these conditions is the possible revocation of that, so the city would be looking at whether the applicant was doing everything they could to enforce those terms. Obviously, there's some conditions where people are going to be creating a problem that's outside of the business owner's ability, but are they calling the police, are they asking for assistance? What are they doing to help maintain these conditions to the best of their ability? There's no criminal liability that attaches to them, so it's strictly their permit that's at issue.
It just seems like it could make an, for an awkward relationship between some of their neighbors, because if somebody's waiting fifteen minutes for a pizza, and they're standing outside, and our applicant comes out and...
It's really no different from other highly regulated businesses, like a liquor, any place selling alcohol, we have these same types of conditions on them, and we work with them to make sure that consumption doesn't occur on the property, that kind of thing as well. So, it's not, it's not, not a new thing for us in enforcement, but it is, it does require working together with both the business owner and law enforcement, code enforcement, whoever's at issue there, and the neighboring properties, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, seems awkward, but it is what it is. Any other questions? All right, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Applicant did provide the handout to you as well.
Oh, okay.
We're here to answer questions, but we figured the staff had the presentation. We had a supplemental presentation that we printed and handed around. As to the earlier question of Commissioner Harris, the terms marijuana and cannabis are used interchangeably, marijuana is a slang term, so cannabis covers the whole gamut of products.
With that, we will open to public comments. Do we have any speaker slips?
Yes, sir, we have one.
Did I?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, we're good? All right, sorry. All right. For Speaker Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and guests. Today, for the, for the first time in the city of Moreno Valley, we're going to adventure into a new industry that was voted on by the public, by the voters in the state of The good thing about it is, that also is going to help a lot of people that are sick and need something to, through their chronic illness. Plus, it's going to give some the pleasure to be able to buy cannabis, marijuana, okay? So, that's the way it is in the state of California, and there's many other states that are going to follow behind us, or we're following, actually, we're following Colorado and them. But anyway, I'm going to go to page twenty-one fifteen, because this industry, this staff has worked very, very hard to make it difficult for any applicant to get this far. I give them congratulations, that they got this far to be in this room with us, because they're willing to obey all the laws and all the ordinance that we passed in the city of Moreno Valley, all of them. So I'm going to start with fifteen. No cannabis, and I'm going to use the word instead of my one, I'm going to use joint as another word, as a hippie word, joint, in the old days, in the seventies. The good thing about them, they cannot display anything on the window, like we have these illegal ones here with the green cross. They cannot stand on the curb and flash a little card, okay? They can't do none of that. They have to do everything right. That's what's good about our laws in the city of Moreno Valley. The other one is, they have to lock everything up at night when they close the doors, like jewelry. They bring them out in the morning, and at night, they lock everything up in the safe, in the safe. So if there's a blackout, and you know when there's a blackout, people like to loot into buildings, so they cannot get to this stuff, okay? No deliveries, so they're not going to be able to deliver anything to anybody's house, you're going to have to go in person and get it yourself, and you've got to be twenty-one and over, okay? Can't smoke on the property, twenty feet, number nineteen. Once again, can't sell alcohol in the building either. So these are good things. They have to have surveillance, they have to have cameras, they have to have all these things that the city of Moreno Valley, the mayor and the council members voted on, and I support it. They have to obey the law. If not, we'll pull the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Having, seeing no other speakers, would the applicant like to rebut anything that was said at that time? No, okay. With that, we'll close the public comment portion and deliberate. Anybody have any thoughts they'd like to share?
Yeah, I'm looking at this flyer, there's some really good information in it about the packaging, which we, I wish we'd gotten this earlier, because it's very interesting, about the packaging being difficult for children under the age of five to open, and some really nice safeguards in this. So I'm pretty impressed with what I'm seeing, and this company, based on this. And also, the one percent being donated back to family services really shows that you want to be part of the community, and I appreciate things like that.
Anyone else?
I just have a question, just a clarification question. In the city ordinance, it does speak about being within six hundred feet of schools, daycares, that sort of thing, but also in Conditions of Approval, number nineteen, it states, operating a business on or adjacent to a dispensary property that's next to alcohol, to someone that sells alcohol. But is there a city ordinance that specifies the distance that a dispensary would have to be away from another business that sells alcohol?
There's no distance, it's just that the applicant themselves cannot sell any tobacco or alcohol, and they can't have, say for instance, a walkway to, through their business to the other business. We did have some discussion on that item as well, and checked with state law, and state law is very clear that the next, the neighboring business itself can sell alcohol, like if there's a restaurant or a convenience store, it's just this applicant, that applies to the applicant that they cannot do it.
I might have read that wrong, then. It said that, yes, they can't store it, they can't sell it, but it also says cannot operate a business on or adjacent to the dispensary property.
Right, they cannot.
That sells alcohol.
They cannot themselves.
They can't operate it.
The other person, somebody else can, but they cannot.
But they can't operate, okay.
In this case, the pizza parlor could sell beer.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments?
I have, I, when this came up in two thousand seventeen to the commission, I had some trepidation about this, and, you know, the state has voted for this, and so, you know, and I do understand the role of the planning commission is, not whether this is right or wrong, it's whether it's in the right location, because the boat's already out to sea whether it's going to be acceptable for the city, and the state. But I still, you know, this is just my, two cents of my concern, it doesn't, whether I'm going to vote no, yes, or no on this, but I, you know, I did, I just did a quick Google search on this, and the state revenue that's supposed to come in with the cannabis, you know, passage of whatever that measure was in two thousand sixteen, it has come woefully under, underperformed, the tax revenue that's supposed to be generated for the state. And I don't know what the cost is to get into this business, I assume it's very costly to do that, and the permits and process and stuff, but I still, and I will voice this again, I, from a very local standpoint, there, this seems like a business that comes with a boatload of regulations, and if the regulations aren't monitored, which has direct expense at the local level, I just wonder what the fiscal impact is going to be on our city. And we have the opportunity for forty-eight of these now, so it sounds like we're going to have a bunch of new staff members, and hopefully, the revenues come in to be able to support all of this, so, you know, I'm off my box, but that's, I do have trepidation about this, because it's underperformed, this whole, from what I understand.
Don't disagree. Commissioner Harris?
I'd just like to respond to what he said. This has been legal for quite a while now, and this is our first person to actually make it to the Planning Commission. And if that's happening in Moreno Valley, I'm sure that's happening everywhere else, people are just, you know, I mean, we might even be one of the earliest people to get into this. So I'm sure the statewide revenues from cannabis just haven't come in yet, because it takes a long time, I mean, you know, we see when the law came in, and this is, this being our first... I mean, you know, we see when the law came in, and this is, this being our first applicant, so that's just my two cents.
Well, and fortunately or unfortunately, all of that's outside the purview of this.
Right.
This body, so save it for the donut shop on Sunday.
I couldn't help myself.
I know, I know. Commissioner Stephen?
I was on the same lines as you. I do know that, that particular area, and there is a problem right now with people loitering right now. So I'm hoping in a way that they don't shoulder everything on this applicant because there are other buildings and other people there, and simply because it is a cannabis shop. You know, I hope the, you know, the other, the pizza place and the other smoke shop, and even the 7-Eleven will do their due diligence to keep some of those people, you know, away from there, and it doesn't get like a bad eye on this applicant, really, just simply because it's a cannabis shop. Because I can see that happening. And a lot of people, you know, I think a lot of people would benefit from getting some of this information. I was really elated to see a lot of this that's in there, in here. It is just, I hope the next applicant is just as highly, you know, doing his job because this, this looks like it's going to be really a class dispensary. So, but like I said, I just hope that he doesn't get shouldered all the bad things that go along with this because a lot of these people are already there, and nobody's really telling them to leave, as I can see. But I just, like I said, I hope it doesn't fall just on him, and then they want to close it up.
It seems that there's very little empirical data as to how these things are actually going to work. So when this commission rules on one a year from now or two years from now, maybe we have more evidence that we can factor into our decision. But right now, I don't know that we really know enough to, you know, affect our decision one way or the other. They've complied with all the requirements, it appears. So it seems there's very little reason to deny them. As I say, in a year after these have been up and running and we learn some of the problems, then maybe we can be, you know, more sophisticated reviewers. But right now, they meet all the rules, so I see no reason to deny, basically.
Chair, if I may, to support your comments here too, I don't know if the commission was aware of this or not, but on any CUP, not just this one, the commission does have the jurisdiction to come back on an annual basis and review the conditions on a CUP to see if they need to be considered for modification or whatever. So you are not necessarily committing yourself down the road to what may become future problems or concerns that necessitate a modification.
So any of us individually, should we sense a problem a year from now, could work with staff and bring review of a particular CUP back before us?
That's correct. Of any CUP in the city, again, not necessarily this one.
Right.
If you had concerns about one, you could ask staff, they could look into it, investigate the situation, and come back and report to the commission, and then decide whether or not to agendize that for any future action.
Good to know. Remember that, everyone. All right, thank you. Well, any other comments?
No, no, I concur. I read through everything, and it looked like everything was met, and all the laws are, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And I just remember waking up this morning, says, okay, I'm finished reading. And the very first thing that was on the news this morning was a marijuana dispensary robbery in North Hollywood. I go, oh, wow. So I say, you know, I, I don't see any reason why we should be denying it. It looks like all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and.
All right, well, someone make a motion?
Was that a motion?
I, do you want to make a motion? Okay, go ahead. Oh, I'll make it, okay. I hope that, I recommend that we approve Resolution 019-12.
I'll second.
The modifications, too.
With the modification, with the modifications that were discussed earlier.
Is there another part to the, oh, no.
No, there's no separate sequel action on this one.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Korsak, a second? Second from Commissioner Harris. Electronic vote. Commissioner Dejeanette?
I did it.
It didn't believe you.
I believe you.
I guess I was last again.
All right, not working.
Let's do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Hold on, let's try the stylus first. Nope, not working. All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims? Commissioner Dejeanette?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Is there a staff wrap-up?
The planning commission's action on this item is an appeal, an appealable action. Anybody wishing to file an appeal would need to do so in writing directed to the Community Development Director, stating specific reasons for the appeal, and with the application fee. If an appeal was filed, it would subsequently be scheduled for city council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Case two, PEN 18-0214. The applicant is Zinc Santa Partners LLC. Do we have a staff report?
And again, Julia Dischido, our associate planner, will provide the staff report.
The item before you is a retail cannabis facility located in an existing building at 13121 Paris Boulevard on the corner of Paris Boulevard and Atwood Avenue. The zoning here is community commercial within the specific plan 204, with the same zoning to the northeast and west, further to the, or south. To the west is village residential with existing residential units. Same as the last one, the city council adopted the ordinances in 2017 and 2018. This application also complies with all the conditions of the, presented, is in conformance with the standards in Title IX that also include a security, I did not mention that before, I apologize, a detailed security plan and an odor control plan. Those are all included in these applications. The location is the, on the corner of the shopping center. There's parking at this facility in the front of the building. It's a larger parking lot. There are additional build, occupants in the center, but there's no parking concerns at this location. There is no expansion of this existing building with this application. However, the applicant is conditioned to do some repainting to the building and also to replace the ingress, egress curb apron on Atwood Boulevard, on Atwood Street. Right there at the existing driveway on Atwood, they'll be replacing the apron. It's cracked, and the applicant has agreed to do so. Additionally, the applicant will do some landscaping there on the south side, where they've got some additional trees going in and some new landscaping to help bring the center up. Lighting standards, that's one of the requirements in the conditions of approval and also in Title IX, that there be adequate lighting. So the applicant will work with the property owner to ensure that that is taken care of too. Well. The project, or the, the project is a retail use, so they'll have cannabis items for sale for only those over 21. The project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act for existing facilities. The public hearing was noticed in the newspaper on the site, as well as sent to all properties within 300 feet. Today, I have received one letter in opposition to this facility at this location, and that was provided to you on your table this evening. As well as, just right before the meeting, we received a petition in opposition of it with 26 signatures. With this application as well, we would ask that it be approved with a modification to the conditions of approval. We would be removing condition number 41 as, for the same reason that that one applies to Title V, and the condition 18 covers 41. At this time, this concludes my staff report, and staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution 2019-13, certify that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and approve Pen 18-0214, conditional use permit, subject to the attached conditions of approval as amended. Myself and the applicant and the rest, and staff is here to answer any questions for you. It is the same applicant as the other one, so when he did provide the workup, that was for both of them.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of staff? Yes, Commissioner?
There is a illegal cannabis shop or store, or it's, it's actually a residence at 12865 Paris Boulevard that would be close to the applicant's legal store. And I just wonder if that has been closed down, if anyone would know.
I'm sorry, could you restate that?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, there's an illegal cannabis house on that same street, 12865 Paris Boulevard. And I'm wondering if that operation is still in, you know, if it's been closed down. I know the city closed down as many as they could, but I wonder if this is, it's actually on Google. If you, you know, it comes, it comes up on Google as a canna wellness center, and it's categorized as a pharmacy.
Yeah, I don't know the address, but I, that, I do recognize that name of that business. We have approximately 11 open cases right now on illegal operations in the city at various stages of being shut down and prosecuted. And I do recognize the name you just stated, but I'd have to go back and double check if that particular address is on our list.
Okay, thank you very much.
The PD has some information as well.
Good evening, sir. Lieutenant Mike Kohler, the administration lieutenant for the police department. I can't address that location specifically. We executed a criminal search warrant there just prior to the holiday season, where a number of arrests were made and criminal charges are pending. And that was a cooperative effort with our code compliance officials here. However, due to the nature of the way the case is prosecuted, what essentially has occurred is the operator has decided to continue to operate, and we're pursuing additional remedies through code compliance action and other administrative efforts. But at this time, they are still operating.
And I should have some good news to report probably at the next planning commission meeting on a number of these, but I just can't get into too much detail on a public forum on them. Thank you.
Thank you. While the rest of these people think about questions, I have one. Could, could you detail the proximity requirements for other uses or facilities from these types of installations?
600 feet for daycares or schools.
And those are the only two?
Arcades, but there are none in this area.
Okay, all right. And obviously, nothing falls within that 600 feet.
Pardon?
And obviously, nothing falls within that because it was identified, but okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Would the applicant like to add anything to the staff report?
I'd just make one comment because earlier, somebody made a citation about the California statewide revenue figures. But in Santa Ana, where I opened two stores, my two stores opened starting in 2015, and combined, they paid over a million dollars in city revenue. So that's just from two statewide businesses. So I'm sure when many of these open, you know, they will definitely drive plenty of tax revenue.
I have a question, and it's probably totally unrelated to this approval, but what's the price point, price range for these products?
Well, the average order is about $80, and the price per product is probably, you know, $20 to $40.
Okay, so this is substantially more expensive than what you would get at a liquor store?
Yes, I think the average ticket is higher than a liquor store.
I was just curious. I had no idea, so.
No, if I can answer any other questions.
All right, thank you. Inexperienced shopper. Any other questions? No questions? Do you have a question? Yes or no?
I guess, well, I did not, I was not aware of the illegal shop that is operating so close to the applicant's proposed. I guess, maybe it's a concern or a question, or because there are conditions of approval that prevent loitering, smoking, that sort of thing. Would there be a condition of approval to, I mean, maybe not open until this other place is shut down? Because I could see that if people are there doing and loitering and stuff, the, it could fall on the applicant, and you wouldn't be able to know if these are my people or those are their people, and they're breaking the law, or they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. How does that work? I mean?
So, first of all, I'd be happy to speak with you after the meeting and give you an update of our, what our individual enforcement efforts are so you can kind of get a better feel for where that's going. Additionally, I don't think, even if we could imply such a condition, I don't think it would help much because these illegal operators are going to keep popping up. We've been playing a little bit of whack-a-mole with them for the last couple of years. We've got some new tools in our belt that we think is going to end that, where the viable locations are drying up. The property owners are taking a big hit on these issues. So it's going to become less and less likely, but there's nothing to stop somebody else from opening up. But we should get them shut down fairly quickly under these new procedures. I don't know how to further reassure you on that at this point in a public setting, but I'd be happy to walk you through the new processes that are going to make our enforcement efforts quite a bit quicker and more effective.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the effort and the direction that we get through the Community Development Department is to work very closely with the Public Safety Department to close the illegal ones down as quickly and as vigorously as possible so that we can not hamper the legitimate ones from actually setting up shop. So we wouldn't, right now, our inclination is not to hold a legitimate business that's going through this process hostage while we're trying to close the illegal ones down. That would be counter to what the whole purpose of having the regulatory framework here is. And they're going through a pretty elaborate and expensive process to get to this point, and to put a condition on it that would keep them at bay until we close down a legal one. I just want to tell you, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that recommendation based on the direction we've been given to try and get these legitimate ones going.
Understandable. My thought was that because there's so many conditions that control alcohol, smoking, that sort of thing, I would just hate to see the legitimate, the proposal, get in trouble because of what's going on adjacent to them, because someone's so close.
We're pretty aware of the illegal activities that are, that are out there.
All right.
I have a question of the applicant. What is the timeframe for completion and opening, if everything goes to schedule? I have a question of the applicant. What is the timeframe for completion and opening if everything goes to schedule?
If we are granted a CUP by this commission, our next step is to file for an annual state license. And that process could take us six to ten months, we hope six. And then with a state license, we would proceed with construction. I think at that point, the city building department would department would accept the construction plans. The construction plan check usually takes two to three months. And the buildout itself takes three to six months. So it's a long ride.
Yeah, so you're eighteen months out potentially.
Well, I'm hoping that there can be some, you know, concurrent work, like we could have plans, the the building plans finalized and ready by the time the state license issues. And hopefully, the state licensing authority can start issuing licenses more quickly. It's kind of anybody's guess as to, you know, when they're going to start issuing a good amount of these annual licenses.
How many licenses have been issued statewide? Do you know?
I think there's only been less than thirty statewide annual retailer permits issued. But there's been about five hundred to seven hundred temporary statewide licenses. In most other cities that have licensees, local licensees that are in operation currently, they're operating with a state temporary license. The opportunity to get that license ended on December thirty-first. So new new city permitted licensees have to go through a longer process with the state, which is called the annual permit. And that was what I estimated at six to ten months.
Do those temporary licenses expire?
They are granted for one hundred and twenty days and they are extended for periods of ninety days. And they are regularly extended by the Bureau. And they will also be superseded by what's called a provisional license, which will continue their existence so that the stores can continue operation while they wait for the annual permits. Basically, there's concern in the industry that there have not been many annual permits issued. So we'll have to see if the state, you know, Bureau of Cannabis Control gets up to speed on that. I think they're hiring more staff in fact to do so.
I have a question. Since that being said, are you going to be getting a temporary license until you get your annual one?
We're not able to get a temporary license anymore. They can no longer be issued by the Bureau. So we will just apply for the annual permit.
Okay, I just there was some confusion as to getting a temporary and then they extend it until you get that yearly one, but they're not doing it.
Once we have a local authorization in the form of this conditional use permit, we will file an annual permit location. That's the six to ten month expectation I'm just estimating there.
For the commission, there are no temporary licenses in Moreno Valley. You had to be lawfully operating before the December thirty-first deadline in order to get one. And and nobody had a CUP in the city before that date.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, let's open the public comment portion. Oops, sorry, back to the roster. We have, looks like four public speakers. First on the list, Aurora Guian.
Good evening. They are here because we are against the open of the facility. We've been talking with the neighbors, Perez and Arrow, and they don't want the business over there. It's a family, family residential, it's churches. And they have children's walking to school. It's a park, Butterfield Elementary, March Mountain, Sunny May Park, it's a church, two churches. And we're really concerned about our families. My husband and I, we own four units in Perez Boulevard, one three one and one four one is four units. We invest our retirement money in the property. And we have four families living there, all of them, they have childrens and they walk to the school every day. And they're really concerned about this shop opening. Because like the gentleman mentioned before, it's already a shop, one twenty-eight sixty-five in Perez Boulevard. And they 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 it's too close to to the one that they pretend to open.
We don't mind to open and all the store they want to open, but not a residential neighborhood. They can open everywhere, but not there. Went over there, nobody wants to start kind of store there, kind of cannabis. There's a lot of families there, you know, it's nothing like, it's a little shopping center at the corner right there. It has a little, it has a liquor store there already. Most of the time, it's fighting, the police always there.
Yes.
If you open the store like that, want to open it, they're going to be more proud.
One of the ladies, they have a beauty supply, beauty salon. And they have families, they complete families, they're going to get a haircut. Like at the same time, they get three for children's kids to to get a haircut. And they they share the the air conditioner, the air conditioner, and the smell is terrible. Because the smell, they go into the, if you go to the shopping center outside, you can smell it. Inside that, when you go inside the those private shoppings, the stores, you can smell. And it's terrible, they, we're really concerned about that. And we asking you to not to approve this, they can do it on a different place where there's not so many families. They mentioned that there's a good revenues and and they are going to give a one percent. I'm agree that it's about money too, but we pay our taxes too. We own properties and we pay our taxes, we we work hard.
Thank you very much, your three minutes is up. Thank you. Next speaker, Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening once again, commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. She mentioned smell of cannabis. That is, that is because the shop or the store is illegal. So there's no filtering system. By approving this tonight, each applicant that gets approved in the city of Moreno Valley must have a filtering system in the shop, okay? So when the product is sold in the shop, it doesn't go outside, it goes to the filtering system. That's a high tech, these shops must be. By allowing it to be legal, you push out the illegal ones. Because if I was buying marijuana and I knew that I walk into the Green Cross, I can get arrested for buying something illegal. But as a legal place, I can walk in and not worry about getting arrested because it's a legal shop, okay? That's the difference between illegal and legal. And I understand what the residents are talking about. But to push out a drug dealer, a pusher, you have to have something legal by driving them out. This shop would drive them out. This shop must comply with all the laws at all times. They see, the sheriff, the deputies cannot walk in all the time into illegal shop, a green one. But in this one, that's legal, they have the right because they gave up their right to be checked every given time. You can come back a year from now, six months from now and change it if you find them doing anything wrong. With the illegal shop, like the city attorney said, they have a plan. We don't know it, he's going to probably hear it tonight, I hope, but it's going to be faster. If we have our legal shops in our city, we drive out the illegal ones. That's the purpose of having a business license in the city of Moreno Valley. I know they're concerned, I saw the shop. I didn't see anything, anything in there within six hundred feet or three hundred feet that's illegal in that little center, okay? I know it's a tough decision you're going to have to make. But I prefer having legal shops to drive out the illegal shops and help our law enforcement to keep those laws in the city of Moreno is much better. It's a better way of going. And I know it'll work if you approve it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Moises Mendoza?
Good evening. I'm against the shop because I live behind the shop in the alley. And then there is one shop already, like in the same shopping center. I don't know if you guys are aware of it. And also the canna wellness center that you guys were talking about earlier. Also, it's like between point three miles from my house. There is another one on on the shopping center that is down there on Caronwood, close to the Circle K. And this one, that one is point four miles from my house. So they're too close to each other, you know what I mean, like? And then there is also another one on the same place they want to put the store. And then if it does get approved, I mean, like, they they began so many problems in the area already, like, people going pee, like they just go around the alley and pee on the wall. And my kids, they be playing in front, you know, like, because their house is facing the alley. So my kids be playing outside and they see people pee. Like there is like two or three times, they're like, it was like two, three in the afternoon. They already just like go and pee, like, you know, that's not, I don't know, it does, they canna, the store customers. And also, people be parking like late hours of the night or sometimes during the day. And then I told him, man, that's not a parking spot, they be like, oh, I'm just going to the store to buy, you know, buy some weed. But that's not a parking spot, you know what I mean, that's an entrance for the people that live behind the store. And also, I don't know if they're aware, also, they, there is a smoking shop next to it. And they did rob one store that that one time. And then they be trying to break in my house like two, three times already in that area. So I don't know if that store is going to cause any more troubles, they already is because also the liquor store. And then, I mean, you got a liquor store and then you got a weed. People are going to get drunk, smoke weed, and then, you know, they they do stupid stuff sometimes when they, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Julian Schaffer.
I'm against the cannabis shop. On your first slide you showed, I also live right directly behind the shopping center. As it is now with the liquor store there, we have people who jump over the fence. We have people in our yards constantly. Moises is my neighbor. Our kids play outside together. And I, we can't even let our kids play outside by themselves without the fear of somebody coming down our driveway. We've called the cops constantly. There's not enough lighting on the backside. So after people go to the liquor store or the smoke shop that's in that shopping center already, they walk right around that brick wall and they stand in front of our houses and they drink and they smoke. You know, my son comes running through the house, mom, some guy just ran through our yard. And he does, he hops the brick wall, then he sees there's no outlet. So then they run straight through our house and run through our backyard and jump over our back fence. We've called the cops numerous times. They sit in that driveway. It just makes me leery with now a cannabis shop on top of a liquor store and a smoke shop in that shopping center directly in front of my house. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers, would the applicant like to come forward and make a statement?
I'd like to address a few of the concerns. As to children that would be in the neighborhood or walking by the business, we have a lobby area that people enter into initially and they are age verified in that room. And then there's an electronic door access to get into the the back room, the sales area. So rest assured, no one under twenty-one will ever get to that area. Also, as part of our our application, we have odor control devices that do create a negative air pressure vacuum on the building space, which keeps smells completely neutralized and does not allow smells to leak into the adjacent businesses. As to addressing illegal businesses in the community, when legal alternatives begin to open, customers will go and patronize the legal businesses. We know that, that's a conversion that's happened in other communities over the past few years. So I am most certain that that will happen here in Moreno Valley as the legal businesses open. And as to various concerns, neighborhood concerns, the addition of our business will actually clean up and protect the neighborhood because our guard will remain and patrol the premise and and patrol the alleyway to make sure that there's basically no one hanging around that building. There's conditions of approval that address lighting. So we will always be, you know, on on top of that. And really, the effect that we have coming in and opening this business is going to create less of the nefarious activity. So I feel like it's it's counterintuitive to to some residents, but I do believe that will be a presence that will benefit the community, immediately adjacent community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know that you have a shop in Santa Ana, I don't know if you have one or two, but have you been in areas that are, I would say, called dicey areas?
Our shops in Santa Ana absolutely are. I think we're right on a gang line on our one store, Bud and Bloom. And it's a beautiful, award-winning store.
Where where is that?
It's in Santa Ana.
But what are the streets? I'm familiar with that area.
Oh, okay, it's Grand and St. Gertrude. Kind of near the train tracks on St. Gertrude. But those are also in in kind of like the industrial areas of the industrial parks of Santa Ana. They initially wanted to keep them out of the commercial thoroughfares. We've we've been a, a crime, crime decreases in these areas because once you have a guard standing outside the business, there is no more crime.
My other question is, what kind of guard are you going to have? Are you going to have a guard that has a gun or are you going to have just a guard that?
It's a third party that we use for security services. And based on ordinance, local ordinance, whether they would be armed or not. But I think we prefer armed armed security.
Because I know the area that they're talking about too, and it can be a little bit. The the crime element there is a little higher than the shop you were proposing off of Sunday meeting.
Yeah, I'm I'm very confident in saying that the, when our business moves in, it will have an immediate effect quelling that type of activity.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other speakers, let's close the public comments and deliberate. Any thoughts?
Well, you know, I can see where the residents have issues right now because there are issues there that are there already. But the thing about the illegal ones, those are going to be getting out and they should be. And I think that'll alleviate a lot of issues because I think the conception of a lot of people is that when you put up cannabis shop, it's almost like a stereotypical thing. They they just see the word and they figure it's going to bring a lot of crime, a lot of people that are, you know, that are there already. But the way the shop is, like I said, I wish some of the people, maybe they could see some of the pamphlet here because if they really read it and see what his shop is all about, I think even some of the people that are doing business there right now, the liquor store and the smoke shop, they don't have as many regulations as what this cannabis business is going to have. And I think the ones that are causing the problem are probably those two buildings right there. And maybe they need to get a little things, the code enforcer needs to get, address some of their issues. But as far as the cannabis shop that this gentleman is proposing, it is, I don't think it's going to be that, you know, the issue with just that. just that business, as far as I could see. And I do understand, because there are, it is, you know, there is families that are experiencing problems right now. But I don't think we should, um, punish the applicant for all that.
Mr. Harris?
Uh, yes, I would, I would like to agree, um, with what she just said. I don't think Mr. Francie should be held accountable for the illegal businesses that are in the area that will be shut down, and you can't, you know, he, he does not have any cannabis in his, uh, where his location is gonna be, so he has not contributed to any of the odors there because, um, he, he doesn't have any cannabis yet. Um, and he won't until all this is completed. And, uh, so I, I don't think that he should be blamed for the people that are, you know, coming around and urinating on the wall, that's a different issue, that's a police issue. Um, so, um, anyway, that's all.
I definitely understand and sympathize with what's going on in the current location. Um, again, I, I agree with, uh, my constituents over here. But it kinda sounds like to me that if these things are already going on, it sounds like it'd be a welcome addition to have an armed guard there. So therefore, I would say that...
Please.
So I would say that, again, there looks like there already are some conditions that are there, that are causing some problems that are there. Um, however, again, we're looking at a, a place that's quite a bit different than the shops that are there, with all the conditions and all the laws that the applicant has to abide by, by making it legal. And again, you've got lighting, we got camera systems that have to go in. No marijuana cannot be seen from the outside of the stores, and no one can loiter, which means that the, the guard there has to prevent people from loitering in, in that place according to the conditions of approval, so, you know, it, it, it does sound like it would be a benefit.
Anyone else?
Um, you know, I looked at all those restrictions on putting this together, and I don't know why anybody would wanna jump through these hoops to do it. It is amazing, the regulations that need to be followed, and I'm not sure if the people from the neighborhood are familiar with the scope of the regulations, the controlled entry, things like that. No child will ever be, according to this, and I, I have belief in this company, no child's ever gonna be able to walk in there. Absolutely, if it, and if it happens, then we would deal with it. But I think there's always this misconception, as you said, cannabis, marijuana, it's gonna bring in the bad people. I don't believe it on this one, I think these are well-controlled, well-designed places, probably even more well-controlled and well-designed than liquor stores, where liquor is very available. Um, and so I do not see this as a negative, even though I can empathize with your worry, worrying about your children and robberies. I was robbed last week, last year, and I don't live anywhere near a liquor store or anything. So, um, I know you have that concern that your, your crime is gonna increase, but it can happen anywhere. So I, I'm going to vote for this.
Anyone else? Any other comments? All right. Well, to summarize, I'm sorry, the public comment portion of the hearing is open.
What happens when they confront these people?
I'm sorry, the public, I, I appreciate your concerns. Please, I appreciate your concerns.
... promised us when they voted the liquor store in that they would take care of this stuff, and they still haven't, to this day.
Paul? Would we have an opportunity to have a discussion during the, uh, sorry, the other commission business portion of the hearing? Uh, I'd like to discuss some of the things you mentioned about CUPs and the ability to revisit and those things. Not specific to these cases.
I can, we can agendize it for the next meeting, and I can put together a presentation for you, and you can, we can have a question and answer, but I wouldn't wanna go too far afield into something that's not on the agenda.
Right, well, and my comments are general in nature, um, just based on what you'd mentioned earlier. So I'll make a statement, and then we can go from there. All right. So with that, um, if there's no more comments, again, similar to the first case, I think we don't have enough empirical evidence to know how these are gonna impact the neighborhoods. And as, uh, the city attorney mentioned, there is the ability to revisit these in the future as a condition of CUPs. And because this is a completely new product that the city is dealing with, uh, since we've already voted on the first case, we don't have an opportunity to retroactively impose it, but I think as a commission, we should probably make sure that we do revisit these in a year and get a handle on what the impacts are, because at this point, we don't know. It's, it's new territory. But with that being said, similar to case one, we, uh, they've complied with all the rules, and I see no compelling reason, comments taken into consideration. I don't see a compelling reason to deny the request either. So, if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'm not ready to make a motion yet, but I, I, you know, I, I really have struggled with this whole concept, you know, but, anyhow, I've already said my two cents about the regulatory, the expense side to enforce regulation. But having said that, and the apparent effort it takes, you know, to get through the process to acquire the license to sell, legally sell, all the, with having a CUP, there are, unlike in the illegal, uh, operation, there will be, and I, I would dare say that whoever's on the planning commission and the, and the city council and so forth will want to, to see what actually comes of these things, as, as far as in, the true up on the cost expenditures and, and the fees associated with it, because I, I, I can't see the city, in the long run, approving, you know, twenty-three or twenty-four of these dispensaries, or however many the market can bear of these things. You know, they, if the expense is prohibitive to regulate them, that's gonna become of issue. And I, I think that will, um, sort itself out at some point. But anyhow, it's a, uh, there's no easy answer on that. I, the only thing I, I can say is, is these are highly regulated, and the risk of losing their license or even getting the license is, is seems to be tougher than liquor licenses and that sort of thing, so, um,
Thank you. Any other comments? A motion?
I, I move that we approve resolution two oh one nine dash one three with the modifications as discussed in the beginning.
Motion from Commissioner Korzek.
Aye.
Second for Commissioner Harris. All right, please vote. Commissioner Dejeune?
That was fast that time, I, I pushed that button.
All right. Did not work. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeune?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Korzek?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Do we have a staff report, wrap up?
Wrap up. Um, the planning commission's action tonight is appealable. Anybody wishing to, uh, file an appeal would need to do so in writing, directed to the community development director, and stating the specific reasons for the appeal, um, along with submitting a fee. If an appeal is received, it would be agendized for a future city council meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, next on the agenda is other commission business. There is none.
Did you have a question on?
Uh, yes, I would like to. Um, you'd mentioned the ability to revisit CUPs at any time, is that, and that's applies to all CUPs?
I can read you that section if you like, I have it in front of me, it's very brief.
Uh, that'd be great, thank you.
As the planning commission may periodically review any conditional use permit to ensure that it is being operated in a manner consistent with conditions of approval or in a manner which is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties in the vicinity. If after the review, the commission deems that there is sufficient evidence to warrant a full examination, then a public hearing date shall be set. At such public hearing, the planning commission may modify or revoke the permit pursuant to the sections of this, of this section, cites the section number.
Okay, well, I, I think that's, I think that's a tool that we probably really weren't aware of, and something that, you know, if, if we feel it's our mandate to assist the community, that we should take the opportunity to do that. And so, since these applications are brand new, I think this is a perfect opportunity to consider starting something, and I'd like to, right now, possibly get an agenda item to put it upon the staff to come back in a year with a report on, um, these installations and see how they're doing.
I, I think it's a great idea, except I, I would say one year after they're actually...
Right, yeah, 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 cause nothing's gonna be happening.
I'd just like to know too, that staff will be doing this as well. If there's a particular business that staff becomes aware of, that is having, that we're having problems with, um, staff may come to you seeking such modifications, changes in hours, changes in lighting, changes in security plans, whatever it may be. Um, so you may see those even without the, the commission itself initiating it.
Right, we have to keep an eye on these businesses, because they are new, and...
Is the, uh, is the liquor store market that is in that same, uh, center, that's a CUP, right?
I believe every business with alcohol sales has a CUP, is that correct? You might know better.
Let, let me answer.
Hot potato?
I don't think any of us up here know if that specific business had a CUP when it was established. I'm not sure what the original date of it is. Generally, businesses that are operating, uh, with sale of alcohol within three hundred feet of a residential development, or three residential units, if it's not a residential district, are subject to a CUP in, in accordance with our current code. So that, that's pretty generally the, the process.
Well, I think, um, that we should maybe put it upon ourselves to, as you go through your day-to-day activities, if you see a location that you have some questions or concerns about, have a discussion with staff and put them on notice to see what's going on, and it's our opportunity to revisit and...
Right.
Mr. Chairman? I, I think what I'm hearing you say, just, but I wanna be real clear, it's not just cannabis CUPs that you can call back up, it's any, any business that was approved by a CUP, exactly.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked about the liquor store, I think, I think there's locations, opportunities that, if we have a concern, bring it up, so, all right, that's, that's my soapbox.
Well, I, I, I see what you're saying, because it sounds like the residents are saying, because of the density of two smoke shops, a liquor shop, now a, a cannabis shop coming in there, and the, the, the existing problems that they're already having, would we look at a CUP to say additional lighting, security guards, that sort of thing, to say, you know, to help the residents out in that area, to say, how can we improve, you know, that, that, that particular section?
Right.
I have a question, but it's not related to any of this. I was kinda wondering what's happening with that shopping center that was supposed to be going up on Heacock, Hemlock, and, um, Ironwood? Or the old, I mean, I see nothing, and we approved that.
Sure. Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner's, uh, response to the Commissioner's question. The development you're talking about is the festival development?
Right.
The festival development is being rebranded?
Right.
Uh, to be called the district now. Um, there is a, uh, in the existing building, there's, next to where the IHOP is, there's, there's been some activity. We expect to see a pretty, a significant retail, uh, chain that would like to establish there, but we're not at liberty yet to disclose who they are, because the lease isn't completely signed, but we do have some activity to kind of bring, uh, some life there in the, in the commercial center. The, uh, Black Ridge Development, which is the entity that got the, uh, specific plan amendment approved, did submit the plans for a five-building, uh, uh, complex or campus. Uh, no specific tenants identified, but they've gone through the, uh, they're going through the building and, uh, and plan check review. Um, I'm not sure exactly when they're gonna start construction, uh, but, but there is activity. Uh, Davis Road, which terminates going through that development, is part of that five-building campus, uh, has plans to be extended all the way up to Ironwood, so it would connect from Ironwood down to, to Hemlock. Uh, we're encouraged that the ten-acre parcel, which was not part of the specific plan amendment that came to you, has had some interest expressed on it, uh, they haven't submitted an application, but the, the property owner is watching what happens with the Black Ridge developments, uh, uh, development. If it progresses, it may serve as a catalyst for that ten acres at the actual corner of, of Heacock and Ironwood, uh, come into life. Um, as the, uh, those projects progress, uh, our planning official, who comes to all these meetings, could give you an update on, on where we stand, uh, can't discuss them if they're not on your agenda, but under, uh, staff comments, we'd be happy to give you an update, what we can, uh, on the progress of, of that development and other ones.
Okay, I'm just elated to hear that there's some movement there, because I was kinda, sometimes an applicant will apply for something, and then they don't come through, or they don't do it, and I was kinda wondering about that, cause I think, once we get something going in there, I for one think that it'll kind of revitalize that area. So I'm kinda glad to hear that. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Um, this is just out of curiosity, how many of these cannabis applications do we have in the tube right now coming forward to us? Is there like two or three more, or?
We have twenty-three applications total, um, and so you'll be seeing them come to you, maybe a few at a time over the next few months. Um, and longer.
Very good, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, any staff comments?
Uh, if I may, I'd like to introduce a new staff member to you. Sitting to my right is Sean Keller, he's our new senior planner, and he just started this week, so you'll be seeing him, uh, in, in the coming years, hopefully, months and years.
Well, welcome. Other, uh, planning commissioner comments? No, we've said enough. All right, with that, uh, we are adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on March twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen.
Can I, I'm sorry, may I interject?
Yes.
At your next meeting, um, the regular start time would be seven o'clock. I just wanted to do kind of a, a quick, uh, request. Would, how many of you would be available if we were to try and do a study session before that seven o'clock meeting? If we were to try and put together a study session at six o'clock? I don't wanna disclose the topic yet, but I'm just trying to see your availability on that night. It, it would be like a one-hour study session on a different project.
I can be there.
I'm available.
All right. Seems unanimous.
I think the...
Oops.
He's working till six? Okay, um...
Six out of seven.
Okay, okay, that was just a, just a, just testing out the water, so, thanks.
All right. All right, with that, we are adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on March twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, seven PM here in these chambers. Good night, thank you.